Okay, good evening. At this time, I'd like to open up the continuation of the public hearing. The floor is yours. I'm sorry, for the adaptive reuse of historical buildings in the village. Just for the record, your name, please?
Tim Mitz. I just want to provide a stream through the new law. There is, you can confirm, and just so you're aware, the federal registry will always announce those properties that have been put on the registry. So you can confirm it by that, by that mechanism.
Okay.
So it's published in the US thing, so you know. That was it, I just...
Okay.
I noted that.
Very good.
Any questions? I'm here to answer.
Thank you.
So, when are we putting this? The first, we're turning to the first Tuesday December.
Do you want to go some more? Or do you want to like, part of December? If not, I'm just gonna, I'll just read out and announce that that is, in fact, the date, from two to five, and that we'll have something out on Constant Contact, and... Yeah. But I gotta get this. Yeah, yeah, yep. Gotcha. So... Yeah. All right, um, what I do can application. Okay, tomorrow morning. All right, so do you want to at least, um, announce it?
Yeah, I don't know when I'm gonna do it. Just kinda...
Right here, maybe after May fourth.
Okay, that's good.
Okay? Unless the trustees have anything, and then you'll mention it. All right, just make your notes right on it, or wherever you want it. Two, five. On the public hearing? Regarding, yes, please.
Good evening, Board.
Evening, legislator Toey.
I'm on, resident up on Reihill Road, legislator here for parts of the town and the village, and I'm, just wanna say that I'm in favor of the, um, the proposed new regu-, new law, and that I am all for preserving our history, and across the county, we're doing it. I feel it would be good for the village, for the town, and the county. And, um, you know, right now, everything is on the upswing in Orange County. We've got a lot of tourism coming in, and with the different federal registry and state registries, I could see that, you know, this could become a destination, someone whose family might have been there and stayed there at Rest Haven, and so for that, I, I just wanted to get that on the record.
Okay, thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Does anyone else in the public have anything? Please, sir, come on up.
Hi, how you doing?
Good.
My name is William Biggs Arrow. I own Hope Pro Exteriors. We did a lot of work on his building. He stopped payment on us. He owes me $21,000. I know the electrician contacted us. He stopped payment on him, $15,000. Any numbers that he's given you, I would just do your due diligence and check those numbers to make sure that he's meeting the numbers that he's saying that he invested into the building. Because it, he screwed a lot of people out of money, and it ain't just me and the electrician that I know of. So that's all I wanna say.
Thank you.
That's the character, the person that you guys have vouched for in your community.
Thank you, sir. No, I understand. Does anyone else have anything to do with the, uh, the adaptive reuse of historical properties? Okay.
I would just wanted to introduce myself on John Hello. I've been working with him on his development, and I would just applaud the Board for implementing your comprehensive plan. I know personalities have gotten into it, and I think sometimes when people look at it, they're looking at one particular application. But really, I can tell you from personal experience, I live and work in the Village of Walden. I live in an older historic home. I've seen the efforts of Walden to try to kinda put the genie back in the bottle when several of the historic homes in there, historic homes were taken, were divided into four apartments and/or more in some cases, with absentee landlords that, you know, have really hurt the character, and it's been a long time where the village has adopted new regulations to try to convert those back to one or two family homes. The same thing in the city of Middletown has been struggling with those issues. You wanna balance. I mean, apartments are great, and I do believe that, you know, there's a time and a place for those, but in balancing in a community, if you have the opportunity to provide some flexibility for some of these older historic homes, can be retained, and can be retained with the character, historic character as single-family homes, or the various, not just for senior uses, as we went through the ZBA process, we did see a lot of your local seniors come and explain that they just wanted a place to be able to live in their community where they can continue to interact. There's affidavits from Wendy Pelmaro regarding these facilities, and these facilities aren't nursing homes, they're places where people can continue to live in their community, with some where their children and relatives, as well as them, can have some comfort that there is at least someone there full-time that they, if they do need assistance, they can call and arrange for that assistance and provide them some counseling, but still allows them to come and go, to visit with their family, to interact in the community that they love. So this is a great opportunity, as are all the other uses. You were, you know, perceptive enough to include in there. That will allow people some opportunities to try to preserve what is a great resource to your community. Individual issues aside, those get, you know, rectified. What you're looking at is the overall picture in a village, and I do think it is a great law, and I applaud you for it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else further? Okay. I think if there's no further comment on this local law, proposed local law, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Call the question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie. Okay, at this time, I'd like to begin the general meeting.
I apologize.
Okay? That's fine. Okay, if we all stand for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I thank you all for your attendance this, this evening, the meeting of November 20th. Let me just please note that there is an exit to your rear and to the side here, and if we can begin the meeting with the following department reports. Have all the trustees had a chance and opportunity to read?
Yes.
Department reports? Okay. I need a motion to accept the department reports as stated.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Call the question?
Aye.
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 So Carrie, the first order of business is Jen Hicks. Okay, resolved that the Board accept the resignation of Jennifer Hicks, which was the part-time water billing control clerk for the Village of Monroe Water Department, effective 11/30/2018. The Board has wished Jennifer the best in her future endeavors. I need a motion that we accept her resignation?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any further questions?
Nope.
Call the question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Trustee Hul?
Yes, in a memo from Sergeant Ametetti. He writes that he asked the Board to accept the resignation of Michael Confield, a part-time dispatcher of the Monroe Police Department, effective November 9th, 2018. We wish him well in his future endeavors. I put that in the form of a motion.
I'll second.
Call the question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Next item is the seasonal labors, two positions. Resolved, the Village Board approved the following appointments to the position of seasonal full-time labor for the period of November 26, 2018, through March 31st, 2019, at the hourly rate of $15 per hour. Anthony Badiato, 17 Kerner Drive in Cheston, New York, and Keith, excuse me, Craig Lungren, 34 James Road, Monroe, New York. I need someone to put that in the form of a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Call the question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Trustee Hul?
Yes, in another memo from Sergeant Ametetti, he asks that the Board approve the recommendation of administrative of him to hire Melissa C. Burke to the position of full-time police officer. Ms. Burke has been employed as a New York State Park Police Officer since October of 2017, and prior to that, as a New York State Corrections Officer. All requirements of the Orange County Department of Human Resources certification of eligibles for exam number 68240, police officer, have been met. This full-time position has a probation period not less than eight, nor more than 78 weeks, according to civil service rules, and would fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Luke Fremgen. The effective date of her hire would be December 3rd, 2018, at a rate of pay starting at the second-year salary. I put that in the form of a motion.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Call the question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, congratulations.
Welcome, Melissa.
Yeah, I have it here, but it's not the, um, not the one I wanted. Okay, next order of business, salary compensation for services, Larry Judice. Resolved, in recognition of additional administrative duties, that he has assumed, the Board of Trustees approve a stipend of $1.50 more per hour, in addition to his regular pay of $35 per hour, for total salary of $36.50 per hour to be paid to Lawrence Judice, heavy equipment operator. This stipend meets the approved guidelines on the Section 2 of Wages and Section 6 of the Collective Bargaining Agreement, and is retroactive effective November 15, 2018. I need someone to put that in the form of a motion.
I'll put that in the form of a motion.
I'll second.
Any further questions? Call the question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Next order of business, holiday parking in the meeting at Central Business District. Effective December 1st through January 2nd of 2019, resolved that the Board of Trustees declare complimentary holiday parking from December 1st, 2018, through January 2nd, 2019, in the Central Business District of the village. I need to have someone put that in the form of a motion.
I'll put that in form of motion. I would gladly second that.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
Call the question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Okay, next order of business is alternate engineer for 310 Scotty Monk Street, two-lot subdivision, 202-1-7.2. Due to a conflict between the property owner and the Village of Monroe Engineering Firm, Lang and Tully, the Planning Board was granted approval for the October 16, 2018 meeting, Board of Trustees meeting, to utilize the alternate engineering services of Tom DePoe, PE, to complete the subdivision application for the property located at 310 Scotty Monk Street. After approval was received, Mr. DePoe notified the Planning Board of several scheduling conflicts which would cause an unnecessary delay to the applicant. Due to these scheduling conflicts, the Planning Board has requested approval to utilize an engineering service of Michael Aiello, PE, as an alternate engineer for this application. Resolved, due to the conflicts of Tom DePoe, the Board of Trustees approved the request of the Village of Monroe Planning Board to use another engineer, Michael Aiello, to complete the subdivision application due to a conflict between the property owner and Lang and Tully, the Village of Monroe Engineers. I need someone to put that in the form of a motion.
Put that in the form of a motion.
I'll second.
Call the question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie. Next order of business, trustee Conklin?
In a letter to the Board of Trustees, the owner of Yimi Chinese Restaurant, located at 417M Store Number 12 in Monroe, has requested a refund of $293.85 for penalties assessed to their account for non-payment of their August 2018 water bill. The owner claims to have mailed a payment in for the August 2018 bill in the amount of $979.50, but to date, the village has not received it. Additionally, the owner claimed that the charges for their November 2018 bill are unusually high, at $2,285.50, and that their bill typically averages around $1,000. Due to, due, to date, the outstanding bill in the amount of $3,558.85 has not been paid. However, billing records indicate that the customer has never been late in the past. Discussion followed on a motion, buddy.
So we need a motion? Are we gonna table this? Because...
I think we should table it.
There's just some stuff that I wanted to speak to Ernie about.
Okay.
So are you guys okay with that?
I am fine with that.
Okay, um, I have nothing actually to discuss or report, other than to, uh, wish everybody at this time a happy Thanksgiving to you and your families, and a safe holiday. Any trustees have anything?
Yes, I would like to let everyone know that, starting this weekend, the Police Department will once again do their annual Toys for Tots drive, so they request that new unwrapped toys be delivered to the Police Department, and they will collect them there. To date, they have about 25 families who are in need of toys for the holidays, so if there's anything that you see, Black Friday is coming up, there's tons of sales. If there's anything that you see that you think a little one might like, we'd very much appreciate it if you could pick it up and donate it to the Toys for Tots.
Sergeant Ametetti, is there any preference as to things that you would want, or things that...
No.
Okay.
We have so many different age groups, so...
And any particular gender, or is it, it's split?
It's probably split fifty, pretty close to fifty-five.
Okay.
Just longer on wraps, so know exactly what it is.
Right. And the age, and the age bracket, does it go up to...
It goes up to like seventeen, eighteen years old.
Okay, that's good to know.
And what are the dates of collection, during what time period, exactly?
We'll start distributing the menu, or something.
So on December 9th, we are going to have the Winter Fest. It's a Winter Fest, also gazebo and tree lighting, and that's gonna be on Sunday, December 9th, from two to five. There'll also be the hayride going around the pond, and Santa will be visiting, there will be hot chocolate, cookies, Girl Scouts will be caroling. Am I missing anything?
Just Mary Dwyer was gonna sing, his rendition of Silent Night. It's fabulous.
Silently.
It's fabulous.
Maybe Simon Michael.
We can interpret that, yep.
Oh, is it my turn? I have so much. First, I'm grateful that it was No Shave November. Actually, the guys all look great with beards, so I think that's fantastic. I want everybody to have a wonderful Thanksgiving, and really just reflect on the year and how crazy it's been, and just be thankful for your family and your friends, because it's so quickly taken. So enjoy and love on them, because there's nothing better to do, so. Go ahead, Ken.
I don't know, I don't, I feel like they said it all. I don't think you need to hear any, anything else from me. I'll, I'll cut it short here. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
And, Ernie?
Yes, Mayor, I would like, at the end of the meeting, for you to call an executive session, so that I can update the Board on pending litigation matters.
Okay, public comment?
What I'm interested in knowing, Mayor, is I attended two planning board meetings recently, and I've attempted to speak at both, just because I know they were sending letters about the historical stuff and everything, and those requests to speak at either of them last weekend, last night, were rejected. And it was concerning to me that certain people sitting up on the Board actually made public statements that they didn't want anything like senior homes in their neighborhood, and they're sitting on your Board. And that's a concern to me, because they're sending you recommendations as to what needs to be done or doesn't need to be done. We did, they, both meetings, as I traditionally do when they're not around, I did videotape it, and yes, it's all up on YouTube. But I just find it, if we're trying to be transparent, I think, you know, I don't know how they work. I was told that one meeting, when they rejected, was because they don't take public comments, but then there was a second meeting, and they didn't take the public comment the second time. So what is the procedure in the village on such a matter?
I'm curious, were they Monday meetings?
Yes.
Both?
No.
One was...
Whatever day they met last week.
Both Mondays?
Both Mondays.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wednesday's your workshop.
Okay.
So that would be the time to have public comment?
Yeah, whatever they met last week, I thought it, maybe it was, you sure it wasn't Wednesday? Well, you, you can check your records.
All right, but I think for the purposes of the format, I do know that their workshops is when public input is, is encouraged, to whether or not they would, you know, open it up during their regular meeting, I couldn't say, but...
Yeah, my goal was...
You know, the format is workshop.
My goal was to streamline a lot of information, being that, you know, I've been involved with these properties for so long, to help it, so when it got to you guys, a lot of what we already talked about can be streamlined out of their paperwork and make things quicker and easier for you guys to do. Or they could have picked up and asked, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention, because I know you're trying to get that transparency going. But if you wanted to see what I saw, you're more than welcome on YouTube, as you know I do, I uploaded, uh, the first one is in two parts, the second one's in full, is one part. So, that you can see on YouTube.
Okay.
All right, thank you for your time, and good holidays, everybody.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public, please?
Oh, man!
Did you, did you do that on purpose?
I trust I told you, there's nobody.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Please.
We were so close.
I thought you were getting ready to be thankful.
I just, I wanna give you an update on Carly Martin. He's up in Albany Medical Center, picture of Monroe. Hoping by tomorrow night to have him back up at the fireman's home, so...
Thank you.
Yeah, he's, he's battling a little bit of a, a little bit of a illness, so...
Anything we can do, John?
No, not right now, but he's always looking for phone calls.
Okay.
If you have his phone number, get ahold of me.
I have it.
Please, he's a cardiologist, say hello. If he feels like it, I'm gone, so...
Sure.
Oh, that's awful.
Next thing is DPW's, DPW Superintendent's position. Are you going to fill that through the civil service list?
The intention is not to.
Why is that?
I just think it's another encumbrance on, on the, I mean, at least in the, in the present time. We have the opportunity, I believe, to bring on two department heads, like we have in our typical format, you know, in the treasuries, in the billing department, so forth, without the encumbrance of somebody creating oversight. And in my experience, from what I've seen, I didn't see the value during my initial term here as a trustee. So I said, when the opportunity came along, to maybe look at it a little differently, which is not to bite onto a superintendent, but to hold the department heads of both water and highway accountable.
The only problem you have, they're part of a union, are they not?
Yes, and that is a problem.
If there's an issue, how do they handle that situation?
So, um, I've been...
That's just one of...
I, I got it, yeah.
Scheduling and, and the workloads here that need to be done in this village.
Yep.
Proper hydro flushing, I brought it to your attention before.
Yep.
But you need to have somebody who's gonna be the administrator, and not gonna be the guy in the ditch, to run both the water and the highway.
Got it.
It's a concern, when you have union people, and every time they sit at a meeting, they're getting paid time and a half. A salaried person, that's part of their job.
Correct.
The same with the police chief. What's going on with that? You got, you got two major departments in this village that you don't have the positions filled.
Right. Well, the Police Department, we're going through the process right now of interviewing, we've just completed the interviews, and we hope... and we hope to by the new year have that in place. So that'll be settled. As far as the DPW, uh, and the Department of Public Works goes, uh, we have to really settle in on, on how we wanna see it happen. I, I do agree with you that they should be out of the units. I agree with that, uh, because I think it's difficult to administer. I thought maybe it wouldn't be, but I think it's proved otherwise. So I think that's come to light, and I'm aware of it, completely aware of that.
I, 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 I think you have a conflict there.
Yeah. No, I, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't disagree with you. Yeah. Yeah.
That's all.
I agree.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate it. Thank you. You too.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public would like to speak? Okay, I need to make a motion that we go into executive session.
I'll make the motion that we go into executive session after a five-minute break.
For the purpose of an update, pending litigation.
Of litigation?
Pending litigation, I'm sorry, yes.
I'll second that.
Call the question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thank you.